Good evening, the time is now 7:02. I would like to call the Beloit City Council meeting to order at this time. Start with item one, which is a roll call.
Six councilors are present with one vacancy.
Thank you, may we all stand for the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, special orders of the day and announcements, 3A please.
We have a proclamation recognizing Tom McCauley.
Vice President Duncan.
Could I have Tom McCauley to come up front with me, please? Hi, Tom. We would like to present you with an official proclamation from the city of Beloit, and I'll read what it says. Whereas Tom McCauley has served as vice president for Beloit Health System since February of 2014, and as part of the health system's administrative team is responsible for human resources, volunteers, education, marketing and community relations, environmental services, and biomedical engineering, and security. And whereas he works tirelessly as the president of the Rotary Club of Beloit and drives social change by keeping focused on service projects that promote peace efforts, fight disease, provide clean water, save mothers and children, support education, and grow local economies. And whereas Tom has been a strong source of leadership because of his generous and humble spirit, serving on the Building and Property Committee, Community Grant Review Panel, and the Board of Directors for United Way Black Hawk Region, also serving on the Beloit Snappers' Board of Directors. And whereas Tom leads by example, he's mission-driven, community-minded, dedicated, and leverages his vast personal and professional networks to inspire collaboration, volunteerism, philanthropy, and unity. And whereas he was instrumental in organizing a vehicle charging station at Beloit Memorial Hospital to support clean energy, one of the first businesses in Rock County offering this resource to patients, staff, and the broader community. And whereas he is an active church member at Our Lady of Assumption, serving on the stewardesship commission, assisting at Mass as a lecturer, and helping with the distribution of communion. And whereas he advocates for health, education, and the financial stability of all people in our community. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Beloit City Council does recognize and congratulate Tom McCauley for his generosity, professionalism, and wholehearted commitment to bettering our greater Beloit community by taking on local and worldwide projects, as well as myriad causes that make Beloit a better and safer place to live. Presented on the fifth day of September 2017 by our Beloit City Council, congratulations, Tom. And Tom, you may want to just say a few words.
Thank you, I appreciate this, it's very humbling to be recognized in this way. We do these things to help the community, not for any other reason, and Beloit has been very welcoming to us in our few years here, and I hope I can continue to give back for many years to come. Thank you, and I appreciate this very much on behalf of my family, the health system, and all the organizations.
Thank you.
And Tom, don't leave just yet, we want to get one photograph. Can your beautiful wife, Allison, can you come forward, and we'll just take a quick photo real fast? Let's turn around this way. You got it?
I can do it.
Okay. Thank you all. Thank you for what you do for our community, Tom.
Item four is public hearings, there are none this evening. Item five is public comments, we've reached a point on the agenda where citizens may come forward and speak. We do have four people that filled out a sheet to speak this evening. If you did not fill out a sheet to speak, you're still welcome to do so, or they're up by the door. We do ask you to limit your comments within three minutes, I will not cut you off, but I'll give you a friendly reminder as you're approaching the three minute. However, we ask you to refrain from any personal attacks from council or staff. Any personal attacks, I would ask you to sit down immediately. The first person that we would like to have a sheet for is Yuri.
Team council members, City Manager Luther. My name is Yuri Rashkin, and I live at 629 Park Avenue in Beloit, and I am speaking here tonight because I am going to be filling out paperwork to potentially fill the vacant seat, and I wanted to stop by and introduce myself. I've been coming to a few council meetings already, and observing, I have experience of having served on Janesville City Council from 2008 to 2012, and it's been four amazing years of serving community, and that is something that I've always felt passionate, and I believe that I can do a good job for residents of Beloit. I think that Beloit is an amazing community, and Rock County overall is a really great place to live. I work actually at UW Whitewater and UW Rock County, and right here at Beloit Memorial High School, teaching ironically enough, public speaking, because English is not my first language. I was born in Moscow, Russia, and I've been in the United States since 1988, and so been citizen, which has become a point of interest lately, for over 20 years. Enjoy being involved, so I think that a couple of important things that I just want to make sure to mention. First of all, community involvement is crucial. I think city council performs a really important role in being champions for the community and representing the community, and this is something that I've always been passionate about. At the same time, city council plays a really important role in financial matters, both in terms of budget and economic development in general, and I've always been a strong proponent of really healthy mix between local businesses and businesses that come to our community from outside, because we need a mix. And finally, I believe that citizens deserve a responsive government. I think city councils are really, really important to make people feel welcomed in a community, to make people feel like their needs are being addressed, and I think you do a fantastic job from what I've seen and witnessed, and thank you so much to you for your service, and I look forward to going through the process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The second person is Butch Dix.
Everybody knows me as Butch Dix in Beloit, but my real name is Alan Dix. I live at 2434 Stonehedge Lane, that is in the Turtle Creek South, and I've been in Beloit for 79 and a half years, so it's been a long time. I'm requesting a signalization at Cobblestone and Cranston Road, the entrance to Turtle Creek subdivision. Also, speed reduction from 35 miles an hour down to 30, or maybe 25, from Showpear Road to the Walmart store. I have a lot of signatures, and most of the people in the area, they've wanted this to happen for a long time. What their remarks were when I got all their signatures, there have been a lot of accidents in this area due to the speed, the cars, the trucks are going way too fast, and make it almost impossible to get out of our Cranston Road and Cobblestone entrance there. There have been over 128 accidents between Showpear Road and the Walmart store. I got that police report just the other day, excuse me. It's almost impossible to get out of Cranston Road on the entrance of Turtle Creek. Motorcycles are the worst, they think it's a racetrack. No radar has ever been seen in the area, according to most people that live in that area. So please pay attention to this, and seriously think about it, to get the speed limit lowered, and also signalization of some kind that we can get people out onto the street of Cranston Road before somebody hits you. Same way coming the other way, rear-ending the cars. So I have copies here for the city clerk, the city council, and the city of Beloit Chief of Police. So if you'd get those to those people, I would appreciate it, and I think that's all I have. If there's any questions?
No, thank you. What I would like to do at this time is refer this to the Traffic Review Committee to put on their next agenda item, and then also refer, get back to council on what they have decided, with an explanation of their decision.
Okay.
So if we can get that on their next agenda item, we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President. Mr. Dix, I just wanted to tell you that as a member of Traffic Review Committee, once we have it on the agenda, I will be paying a special attention to that on your behalf, okay?
I know you were at the last meeting that I was at.
Right, mhm.
Okay, thank you.
I've certainly been noticing as I drive out there. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Matt Finnegan, 2212, Noah View Drive in Beloit. I'm just here to talk about the proposed ordinance changes, has the second reading this evening. Frankly, we were, when I say "we," I'm talking about the Beloit Property Managers Association, we're hoping that you put a different type of program in place that was, you know, maybe had better use of the resources that we have. I mean, back in 1994, we were one of the driving forces to get this type of systematic inspection thing put in place, and it was, you know, 23 years ago, and if anything, we're a little naive to believe that it would go away. I mean, the reality of it was, back in 1994, Beloit was a different place. We had habitually bad chronic landlord situations going on, and really, the only way to deal with it was the shotgun effect. This is what we're basically talking about, you're creating a, again, a continuation of the shotgun effect for inspections. And we were kind of hoping to maybe laser in on the habitually bad people. I mean, the staff knows who they are, they're the ones that are in court all the time, they know who they are, and I guess, well, you know, it would have been a little bit helpful, and I guess maybe we dropped the ball even, because we heard that there was some sort of discussion about this, that we didn't know about it, we missed it, and maybe part of it was because even though we're not technically part of this lawsuit, we're known to be a part of it. There's only two defendants at this point in time. I guess I would really urge you guys to lay this thing over so it can be looked at a little bit more. I mean, I know that there was a presentation last time, but I guess what I'm saying is, you really need to really take a close look at your free structures, and how you've got that lined up with the state, the way the state law is written. I don't think it's accurate. I mean, I don't really want to be back here or doing this thing over and over again. You know, and in the end here, you just need to understand, we have the same goals that everybody does. The whole reason this whole thing started had to do with arbitrary, the way they arbitrarily put people out of business. That's why this whole lawsuit started. We had several people in our community that were, because of the way the thing was structured, where if there was a $10 owed over here, they could yank all the rental permits, and they were now illegally renting all their rental properties, and it put people out of business. And that's what started the whole thing. It's really not about conditions, we need this, we need to have our homes continue to go. I think the property values are showing it. The other thing that's going on in today's economy out here, as far as inspections go, our insurance companies are, you wouldn't believe, insurance companies all send out exterior inspections. They're refusing to insure if it needs roofs, if they need painting, things like that. So some of the work is being done. It's kind of hoping to see that maybe some of the people that were doing inspections could be shifted over and become loan processors. I was shocked to hear that only 12 to 20 loans are being done out in these neighborhoods, you know, and I know it's because there's only one loan processing person. So maybe get some cross collateralization, and when somebody's got a roof in it, and it's a lot of fragile homeowners in this town, someone's got a roof, maybe the inspector could help pursue and get the money out there to get the roof done, because I mean, a lot of people are going to lose their insurance because they don't have good roofs. And so, I guess all I'm saying is, I'm not completely sure that what you guys got in front of you is what you really want. I appreciate it, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Hi, I'm Priscilla Gustina, I live at 1313 11th Street in Beloit. I've been a long-term community member here, my life, and I grew up here, I taught here, retired here, and have owned property through the years here. My father did too. We've invested a lot of heart and soul into this community. We're still here, where a lot of people have left. I am passionate about Beloit. I want Beloit to be a wonderful place, I want to see it improve and get better, and so on. One of the things, though, again, I'm asking is that you consider holding off on the decision and the vote on the ordinance to really give us a chance, yes, like Matt said, we were out of town, you know, summertime tends to be a time for vacations, and so maybe we dropped the ball too, we didn't know about it. In the meeting at 6:30, you know, before this meeting started, it was mentioned that there was a chance for discussion. I was asking some of the other landlords, and none of us had heard about that at all. So, you know, again, it's just a plea to let's have some communication. I have found that through the years, oftentimes, there's, I feel, a lack of communication between community members and the city. Again, I'm hoping that it just doesn't have to be pushed through because it's the second reading, and we missed, you know, the ball. So I would love to have it extended, and given us an opportunity to come and sit down and chat about this a little bit more, because again, we want what's best for the community. It's not, you know, it's not that we don't, so we do, but we just want to make sure that we're all on board, and that we understand what's going on, because again, oftentimes you feel like we're out in the cold, and we don't know what's going on, and the next thing, it's like, you know, being decreed upon us. And this is our life, this is our business, we want to understand it, and we want to be able to have some communication regarding that. So I'm asking you to please consider tabling it and giving us a chance to come and discuss this more. The other thing too is, I want to see equality, not only in the rental property, but in the owner-occupied people that own properties in this community, because oftentimes, as a landlord, we felt that as landlords, we have been targeted, and like Matt said, there was, you know, in the past, there's been some pretty bad landlords, but there's a lot of us that are awful darn good, and we try so hard to keep our properties nice, and it's a tough battle with some of the clients that we have to deal with, and we have to go and rehab and do all this constantly, and it's very difficult. But I see that sometimes homeowners are not held to the same standards that the rental property is, and they affect our community too, there's a visual on that. So again, I would like to just mention that, that it'd be nice to look at it as a whole community, and not just targeting certain aspects of the community, okay? Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak under public comments this evening? Second call, anyone else wishing to speak under public comments this evening? Third and final call, anyone wishing to speak under public comments this evening? Seeing none, I would close item five and move to item six, consent agenda, please.
All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member shall request, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda.
Is there any councilor wish anything to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda will consist of items 6A through 6D. Is there a motion for approval? It's motion by Presso, it's a second by Duncan. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that portion of the agenda passes, moving to item seven, licenses, please.
7A is a resolution considering approval of 2017 to 19, applicants for an alcohol beverage operator bartender's license, for the application dates between August 11th and the 25th, 2017. What you have before you are 11 applicants, at this time, none of them are being recommended for denial, all 11 are being recommended for approval by the Beloit Police Department.
Okay, is there a motion for approval? Motion by Duncan, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Anderson, is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving item 7A signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, item seven passes. Item eight, ordinances, please. 8A?
8A is a proposed ordinance to repeal section 1406 sub 6, to repeal and recreate sections 1406 sub 2, 3, and 4, to amend sections 1402 sub 9, 7.06 sub 2C, and D, 7.065 and 25.04 sub 4D of the Code of General Ordinances of the city of Beloit pertaining to rental registration certificates, rental dwelling unit inspections, inspection fees, and enforcement of parking violations. This is second reading.
City Manager Luther.
Thank you. As I had indicated previously, there was a lengthy presentation at our past meeting, walking through the components of all of the changes that are incorporated in the documents in front of you tonight. Just in response to a couple of the questions that were raised, I would point out that all of the property maintenance requirements under chapter seven apply to both owner-occupied and to rental properties. We have a structure in the new plan that includes options for the voluntary inspection program, the VIP program, complaint-based, which again, applies to a owner-occupied or to a rental property regardless. And the final component would be the systematic rental inspections for those who choose not to participate in the VIP program. So I believe that we have put together a package that addresses all of the issues that were pertinent to continuing the public health and safety of our residents, and I will simply stand to answer any questions that councilors may have.
You heard the presentation, is there a motion for approval on item 8A? To get it on this table for discussion? Motion by Presso, is there a second? Second by Duncan, councilor comments. Counselor Presso.
I just want to add to that, that there was the presentation made at the August 23rd Housing Seminar, that went over this at quite a bit of length, I believe, and there was quite a large crowd there for that, if I recall right. I was unable to make the seminar, but I saw a summary of it.
I was not physically present for that meeting, so I couldn't speak to that, but I would state that we spent a great deal of time going through the presentation that had been appropriately posted, going through, walking through every component of the changes at the past council meeting.
And I was not here for the first reading due to a total eclipse, but I...
Out of your heart, I couldn't help it, I'm sorry.
So, so I just want to make sure that everybody understands, we're doing this to comply with the, some of the rulings that were involved in that last year's lawsuit, and to get us prepared for the next budget cycle, and a new budget year coming up next year. And these are all things that we need to get addressed, and these are all things that we need to take care of to move forward, we have other things coming down the pipeline here. And I personally don't see anything controversial in these changes, I think this is a nice improvement. There's, after doing this since 1994, and seeing the limited results we've had so far, certainly changes in order, and this is going in the right direction, encouraging compliance is always a good thing, rather than encouraging punitive damages or back and forth. So I think this is a really good thing, as far as what I can see of it so far. I'm not surprised there were few comments prior to tonight, I'm a little surprised that we hadn't heard anything from the landlord group, I'm not sure why that happened, perhaps there wasn't a whole lot that they, you know, to comment on or criticize. So anyway, that's where I'm standing, and I was want to make those comments, thank you.
Council Blakely.
Yes, thank you. Our two speakers who addressed this pending ordinance spoke about, included in your remarks, about the homeowners being treated on the same basis as property owners, landlords. And Matt made the comment, there are a lot of fragile homeowners in this town, and Ms. Gustina said that you would like to have homeowners held to the same standards. And I do believe that in the proposed ordinance, that those factors are thoroughly covered, as the city manager was saying. And Lori, I wonder if you, if you don't mind, if you could reiterate your points regarding homeowners and landlords? Thank you.
Turn it back on, you just turned it off.
So, on one point, the property maintenance requirements under chapter seven do apply to both property owner-occupied and to rental properties. The distinction, I believe, in what was discussed in the prior council meeting, is that there is a difference between the potential conditions in which someone running a business may choose to allow other people that they are not related to to live in, and the conditions that an individual who is occupying their own home and their own immediate family members may choose to live in. And we are addressing specifically the owner-occupied issue through the issuance of complaint-based fees when we receive any indication that an issue has arisen that requires further evaluation. So the code itself does apply to all, the systematic inspections are specifically for the rental properties that we have had historically more challenging difficulty in reaching compliance with. And so there is a distinction, but I think that helps provide a framework for why the properties have the same requirements, but the methodology in order to ensure compliance is specific in terms of rental properties.
Does that answer your question, Council Blakely?
Yes, I appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Council for back.
Yes, I know, Matt, you said that it is, if only we could take a look at some of the landlords who totally, you know, don't follow safety measures, and et cetera, and be able to be maybe more respectful, or give some leniency to landlords who have a great record. And I'm sure there are landlords who have a great record, I've talked to some of you. But I think the feeling, at least in the past decisions, I'm learning about city government, is that you want to not be able to have somebody accuse the city of playing favorites. So the shotgun is in fact, I guess, for everybody. But that's not to say that we think everybody does bad things with their rentals, but I think it's because just being a rental unit, it is inspected, it doesn't matter who owns it. Does that help, Matt, a little bit? I mean, that's just a thought I have, on what I'm learning.
Counselor Duncan.
Am I wrong?
Yeah, you're on.
Okay. The only thing that was challenging for me in the whole thing was the enforcement of the parking violations. I was just wondering, why would we not want it to be the responsibility of the tenant as opposed to being the responsibility of the landlord? And perhaps our city attorney can help us with that, or the city manager?
City Attorney?
The issue of parking on private property becomes an issue for the property owner versus, let's say, the owner of the vehicle itself. We've had a number of issues in the past in court where we've relied on the landlord's statement as to who is living at that property, and unfortunately, that tenant has moved out, and then a ticket was issued to an older tenant, and so that becomes problematic for the city, because you need probable cause in order to issue that citation. The only reliable database we have for those properties is the Register of Deeds Office, where the tax bills go. And so we've had some pushback from the landlords as to who are living in the properties, and how to get that reliable information about who the tenants are. And so the only way that we can enforce that property maintenance code is against the property owner themselves. They could certainly build into their lease agreement, if there are any violations of the code, that their tenant is responsible back to the landlord for any forfeiture... the code, that their tenant is responsible back to the landlord for any forfeitures that are paid, but that would be a civil issue between the landlord and the tenant.
Is there any questions, Councilor Duncan? Okay. City Manager Luther. You got any more questions, I'm sorry.
I'm just thinking.
Councilor, you don't have any other questions or comments? Councilor Duncan, you're fine?
I'm fine.
Okay. There is a motion and a second on the floor for approval. At this time, I would call for the vote, all in favor of approving item eight A, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes. Item eight B, please.
Eight B is a proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map to change the zoning district classification from C3 Community Commercial District to planned unit development for two portions of the property located at 2956 Milwaukee Road. This is second reading.
Ms. Christiansen.
You may recall at your last meeting, you approved the PUD master land use plan for the, these two pieces of property, and they are on this map, hatched in green. And you also held a public hearing at your last meeting, so this is on your agenda tonight for action. It will take two small portions that are a total of .2 acres and rezone them to the PUD. And then if this is approved, then the property owner will do a certified survey map to actually combine them to the adjacent parcel that contains the PUD.
Okay. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion by Blakely, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Preschow, any councilor comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor of approving item eight B, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes. Item nine, Appointments, please. There are no appointments this evening. We move to item ten, Council activities and upcoming events, and we will start with Councilor Forback.
Well, yes, I attended the housing meeting, and I was very pleased. It was at the library a week and a half ago. And I have to say, having had to be the formulator of meetings intended to get input in the past, I was very happy to see so many people who know things about housing there. It was not only the city, but there were many landlords, there were developers, there were builders, there were engineers, you know. So I thought it was a good group of people listening to a lot of information. I was going to say in my remarks today about hoping that we would have another meeting like that, because it certainly was the desire, I think, of the people there, that we continue meeting and conversing. But I think just today or yesterday, I got something from Drew saying that there is going to be another meeting. I do know that I got a call with a request to have more opportunity to really have maybe more official back and forth talking, so I'll just talk to Drew about that. And I'm looking forward to continuing. Certainly, housing is my area that I don't know a whole lot about, but I'm learning and I'm passionately involved with. I grew up here, and so I really care about it.
Thank you. Council Preschow.
Well, I'm sorry I missed the last meeting. Anyway, following that meeting, I attend, prior to the meeting, I attended the peace march down to the, to the, with the Switch Lanes Group, down to Riverside Park. And then we, I attended a legislative breakfast last week, which was a surprising event with Amy Laughton-Buck and Mark Spritzer, having a discussion with a group of local area. And it was interesting that how Foxconn and the controversy over that development dominated the meetings and the discussion. It was good to see that the two of them, while they disagree on many things, they agree on most of the things that we care about locally, and they work pretty hard for us. And that was, that was very good. I also attended the open house at the Merrill Community Center, the now reopened Merrill Community Center, which was a nice surprise. I didn't know they were going to get open so soon, but it makes sense. And Mark Perry and his group seems to have a good idea of what they want to do over there, and I'm sure they'll be very good at it. It's great to have that back in business. I also, we, this, coming up this weekend, there will be Discover, Discover Wisconsin, we'll be back in town filming the farmer's market and some of the businesses downtown. They've been doing that all year so far, preparing for a Beloit, dedicated Beloit episode coming up next spring. And so I'm looking forward to that, and we're getting, and also as part of that, I'm really thankful to the engineering crew and the contractors who fixed State Street and did a really, really good job. I mean, that was, we had real concerns here a month ago, and it was, it was, not only was it, was it, you know, our concerns unfounded, we got way more than we could have ever hoped for as far as the way that was done. It was very well done, really well done. Thanks a lot to everybody over there and all the contractors. And with that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Council Anderson.
Thank you. Well, first off, you know, school's back in session. I think many parents might be celebrating that. I go back to school tomorrow too, so I begin with 8:00 AM class right off the bat, so I'm not looking forward to that at all. But, you know, I also did the community action open house. I swung by close to the end and talked to Mark Perry, and I'm impressed with what I saw. You know, it's great to have that opened up again. They just began the after-school program today. I, actually, today I dropped off some food to help the kids out, because, you know, as many of you know, a lot of those kids, if they don't get food from the school, they don't eat. So us providing them food is something that could help them, you know, stay out of trouble and stay focused and, you know, be productive. So if you have any opportunities to donate, please do. They always need food, they always need something to keep those kids, you know, active and engaged. So feel free to drop by stuff at the new Merrill Community Center if you have a chance. Lastly, I'm actually doing a friendly little bet with one of the Janesville City Councilmen that I wanted to announce today. Jens Ruggensen, who is a Janesville City Councilman, we got to talking and realized that Craig plays Beloit, you know, him being a Craig alumni and myself being a Beloit alumni, we decided to make a friendly bet. And what we decided to do is have a non-perishable food item collection at the game. We got permission from the athletic director today, so if any of you go to that game, which I believe is the homecoming game too, if I'm...
It is.
Oh, it is? Okay, excellent, excellent. So, you know, if you go to the homecoming game, please bring a, you know, non-perishable food item. Myself and Jens will be collecting out front. If you want to donate ahead of time, we'll be setting up some future locations to donate between now and the game. It's September 22nd at 7:00 PM in Beloit. Also, side note, I really hope Beloit wins this, because we also have a bet that the losing one has to put on a tie with the opposing school colors on it. And, you know, I don't want to really put on a Janesville-Craig-related tie, and I do have a phenomenal purple tie to give Jens if Beloit pulls off the win with a night hat on it. So hopefully he'll look good in purple. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Blakely.
Now that school is back in session, including Clint going back to school tomorrow, we are so glad you're continuing your education, young counselor. This is our time to say what I did this summer. And it's a list, very briefly said list, of events that were available in Beloit this summer, which helped make the city a great place to live. The Beloit City Parks Tour, our parks are amazing, they were well-used yesterday on Labor Day. The Farmer's Market, the Ride Along with Chief Zee on the Fourth of July, safe, happy, colorful event. National Night Out, Neighborhood Listening Sessions at Hackett and Merrill, Bethel AME Church's Anniversary Celebration, the Beloit Together Rally in Horace White Park, the Switch Lanes Peace Event in Riverside Park, going to Beloit Public Library and checking out the Blender Cafe, walking by the river and watching and not watching the eclipse with my neighbors. In walking by the river and checking out some of the city parks, I've had a chance recently to talk to a couple local residents. One Westsider who grew up in Beloit talked to me about Beloit's main challenge. What she said was, giving the next generation something to look forward to, keeping the kids here. How do we make a Beloit-er, a lifelong Beloit-er, which I thought was a really good point? I also spoke to an Eastsider who wasn't born here, but who adopted Beloit almost 50 years ago. And when I asked him about Beloit's biggest challenge right now, he said, it is our city's reputation. We need to keep building the positives and spread the word about what Beloit has to offer. And in that same regard, I want to wish firefighter Paul Martin best wishes on his impending retirement, which I guess begins officially this Friday.
Thank you. Vice President Duncan.
Okay, I had the opportunity to meet with Debbie Fisher and youth, youth members, and am looking forward to working with them on efforts to reduce substance abuse in our community. Also, I had the chance to eat at the Blender Cafe in the Beloit Public Library. The food was really good, and I would like to encourage citizens to go and check it out. And I was also at the Farmer's Market on Saturday. It was great to see so many people out. There was an array of food vendors and entertainment. If you haven't been yet this summer, you are missing a treat, but you can still make it, because our Farmer's Market will run through October. Special thanks to Shana, the Downtown Beloit Association, and our city staff for making this a successful venture downtown. And again, congratulations to Tom McColling for making a difference in our community. And I just want to end by saying, let's keep the people and families in Texas in our prayers. That's all I have.
And I would like to echo Council Anderson's, his friendly competition. Janesville-Craig has been an ongoing friendly rival of Beloit for several years, even when I was back in school years ago, a while ago, a very while ago, even before that. So it's been going on, so we were encouraging everyone from Beloit, if you could drop off a can good and help Council Anderson out with that, I'm sure he would greatly appreciate it. And then as a friendly reminder, as a parent who had kids in college, you can make your schedule a little later, Clint, if you don't like 8:00 o'clock classes. You do realize that, right? I'm just, okay, I just know you said how much you hated the 8:00 o'clock class, I just wanted to remind you. I often say that you may say I was having fun down here, but that does not mean that we do not take the business of the city very serious, but I think in life, sometimes you just have to laugh and have a good time, and no matter what you're doing. So we like to do that periodically down here, but we still take the business of the city very serious. So I don't want anyone to think that just because we joke around that, that's what it's all about. So with that, that concludes item 10. We move to item 11.
There is no presentation.
Okay, item 12, Reports from Boards and City Officers.
Twelve A is a resolution authorizing schedule of fees and charges for certain housing inspections and solid waste services.
City Manager Luther.
The attached schedule of fees and charges are completely consistent with the ordinance changes that were discussed previously and the presentation that was provided at the past city council meeting. So this provides you with the legislative piece to allow us to move forward with budgeting and implementing those changes, and I would respond to any questions you might have.
First of all, there are motion. Motion by Anderson, is there a second? Second by Forback, any questions or comments? How will this be communicated to the public?
That is an excellent question. Actually, are you, we're turning yours on?
No, I wasn't. It was the faces that looked at me.
Oh, okay. I thought I was interrupting you. Actually, what we had anticipated in a best-case scenario, as far as the complaint base can be implemented rather immediately, the VIP program and the systematic inspections are going to take some time to get the scheduling and everything in place. Optimistically, we would try to get an October start with communication moving forward in September, but we will have to have the timing reflect our ability to make sure that there is good, strong communication in both English and Spanish, and being able to get the word out, as I had mentioned. So we also are working with a new electronic process, so I think it'll be much easier for applicants. We are working on creating an online application, and that will ease certainly the data entry on staff's part, but also make it much easier for landlords in the future as well.
Any questions? Seeing none, we do have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, twelve A passes. At this time, I would entertain a motion for council to go into closed session. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Duncan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Preschow. All those in favor of going to closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, council will go into closed session at this time, and we will come back out and adjourn. Is there a motion to go back into open session at this time?
So moved.
Motion by Duncan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Blakely. All those in favor of going back into open session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we're back in open session. At this time, I would ask the city clerk to read the title of the resolution, please.
This is a resolution authorizing annexation option for Town of Beloit property owners.
City Manager Luther.
Thank you. The Town of Beloit recently published its Notice of Intent to Circulate a Petition to Incorporate a Portion of the Town of Beloit into a Village. In order for Town of Beloit residents to have the option to consider annexation as an alternative to incorporation, the city council must file a resolution at or before the first hearing for the incorporation petition, and that hearing has yet to be scheduled. Therefore, a two-thirds majority of the Beloit City Council this evening would be required to approve a resolution authorizing an annexation option for Town of Beloit property owners, and they will be discussing that resolution, and that vote will take place shortly. It is this body's belief that the best interest of the metropolitan community are, pardon me, that the best interest of the community, that proposed annexation be considered to the opportunity for incorporation as a separate municipality. I want to point out and make it explicitly clear that nothing in this action requires a Town of Beloit property owner to annex into the City of Beloit.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, could you read your actual resolution, please?
Whereas, a notice of intent to circulate a petition to incorporate a portion of the Town of Beloit notice has been published, and whereas, a true and correct copy of the notice is attached here too. And whereas, the City of Beloit is able to provide full services to the territory described in the notice, and whereas, nothing in the resolution requires any Town of Beloit property owner to annex into the City of Beloit. And whereas, it is in the best interest of the metropolitan community that the area proposed for incorporation be considered for annexation to the City of Beloit rather than incorporated as a separate municipality. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Beloit, Rock County, Wisconsin, pursuant to State Statute 66.0203 sub six, Wisconsin statutes, that the City of Beloit is willing to annex the territory described in the attached notice.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Preschow, is there a second? Second by Duncan. Any questions or comments on the resolution? Seeing none, our Council Preschow.
I just, I just want to make it clear that there is nothing in this resolution that requires any Town of Beloit property owner to annex into the City of Beloit. We are doing this because it is in the best interest of the City of Beloit to provide an alternative to the Town of Beloit's incorporation petition. And I duly hope they will consider annexation, because I think Beloit's a great place and we're better together. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions or concerns? Seeing none, there is a motion and a second on the floor for approval. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hold on, Council Forback, do you have anything?
No.
Okay.
I was saying a lot.
Okay. So, any opposed? Hearing none, it passes, it passes 6-0. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Preschow, second by Forback. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned.